The public service announcement. The city council will meet today with four voting members of the city council remotely by telephonic conferencing system. Some city employees will also be available to participate in the same manner.
Thank you. First, we have approval of minutes and report of correspondence by city clerk and report of business from council president. Public hearings, ordinances on second reading, ordinances on first reading, one, an ordinance to authorize vacation of a portion of Church Street, two, an ordinance to accept the dedication of a stormwater drainpipe easement, three, an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan for the Farron redevelopment area, four, an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan for the downtown redevelopment area. Resolution one, re-adopt 2022 meeting schedule, two, approve agenda amendment, three, council designation of liaisons, four, designation of council member to planning board, five, designation of council member to Board of Directors of City Market, six, approve 2022 temporary city budget, seven, designation of bank depositories and cash management for 2022, eight, fix interest rate on delinquent taxes and water, nine, authorized cancellation of tax delinquencies, ten, authorized direct mailing charges and costs associated with tax sales, eleven, authorized CFO to sell bond anticipation or capital notes, twelve, authorized tax collector to make tax refunds, thirteen, authorized city engineer to execute land use regulatory permits in various forms, fourteen, authorized city engineer mayor to execute right-of-entry permit forms in 2022, fifteen, authorized city engineer to execute hold harmless and indemnity agreements, sixteen, authorized tax assessor to file tax appeals, seventeen, designate public agency compliance officer, eighteen, a resolution authorizing contracts with certain approved co-op vendors, nineteen, authorized advertisement and receipt of bids, twenty, authorized city engineer to sign site remediation project documents, twenty-one, resolution authorizing the cancellation of various outstanding checks, twenty-two, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance and road closure at Somerset and Lewis, twenty-three, authorized refund for redeemed tax sale certificates, twenty-four is being held, twenty-five, approve refund of permit fees, twenty-six, authorized tax collector to cancel certificate two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-three-zero, twenty-seven, authorized tax collector to cancel certificate two-one-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-eight, twenty-eight, approved person-to-person transfer of liquor license one-two-one-four-three-two-one-zero-two-zero-one-zero. Then we have items for discussion by council. OEM update. The next meeting will be on Wednesday, January nineteenth at five-thirty PM. The meeting will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the ball?
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming is absent. Council Vice President Escobar.
Here.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied in that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board and posted in the bag vestibule of city hall visible to the public through the windows and the lobby of city hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the home news tribune. Additionally, a forty-eight hour notice of time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the city clerk on December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one as is required by law.
The city council intends to meet on a regular schedule and will meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meetings Act by utilizing a telephonic conferencing system through which the public may participate. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the forty-eight hour notice. During the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment, all callers from the public will be muted. During the public comment period, those who have interest in addressing the council will first be organized by last name, then called upon to speak one time and for no longer than a five-minute period during each public comment portion of the meeting. A timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period and the speaker will be notified that their time has expired. Public meeting assistants accessing the call-in number should call city hall at seven-three-two-seven-four-five-five-zero-zero-seven.
Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Encourage me to join me in a moment of silence to respect and honor our military personnel and law enforcement officers who dedicate their lives to protect our freedom, safety, and democracy. May God guide them safely in their duty. Thank you. We have no minutes to approve and report of correspondence by the city clerk. Madam Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the city clerk's office has been forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. And now, moving forward, I'm going to utilize this portion of the meeting to address the public as I deem necessary. This will include any follow-up from public comment at prior meetings. As a reminder, we will continue to follow Robert's rules of order and maintain proper decorum throughout the council meetings. Public comment is exactly that, is your time to address the council with commentary. If you pose questions, they will be addressed as necessary at the following meeting. If you have particular questions, the most efficient way for you to receive the proper answer is through the appropriate department of the city during normal business hours. Due to the nature of inquiries regarding police and fire departments, those requests should be made in writing to the appropriate person in the appropriate manner, whether that be email or Oprah. Each of those departments has their own process for disseminating information. And the first thing I'd like to address tonight is that body cams will be operational tomorrow for the day shift and traffic safety division. There will be a two-week observation period to allow for functionality, then the department will be operational as a whole, and that is the only comment that will be made on that this evening. Next, there was an executive order signed by the mayor last week implementing a mask mandate for all indoor settings. I received quite a few calls from business owners and community members who are not aware of the orders and it seemed to be causing some confusion throughout the city. While the information is disseminated via press release, social media platforms, city market announcements, and the city website, I've initiated another level of communication to help us reach a broader base within the city and outside the city as well. Executive orders will now be broadcast via Nixle. While we do not want Nixle to become a platform for general information that negates the urgency of particular messages, I feel executive orders rising to the level of public health and safety are appropriate to communicate in this manner. I want to thank Madam Clerk, Deputy Director Miller, and Public Information Officer Bert Barron for helping me facilitate and implement this measure, and I'd also like to let everyone know that to opt into Nixle, you can text your zip code to eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven or you can go online at www.nixle.com. Next, I just have a general reminder with the tease of snow we've been having lately, if you can keep your vehicle off the road during and following a snowstorm to allow for efficient, safe, and timely snow removal, it is beneficial to you and the Department of Public Works as well as emergency vehicles throughout the city. If there is an anticipated storm, you can look at the city website for information regarding available parking decks throughout the city free of charge for your convenience. And then finally, I know there have been one or two members of the public pushing for in-person meetings again, and the position of this council has not changed on this matter, and we do not feel it is in the best interest of the public health and safety to transition at this time. We continue to monitor our situation, and the public will be notified with proper meeting notice when the time is appropriate. The number of COVID cases are real and rising in an astounding fashion. Our hospitals are once again on the verge of being overburdened, and there still remains an imminent crisis of public health. I want to thank everybody for their patience and understanding as we continue to navigate through these unprecedented times, knowing the city and services we provide are still available to the community that we serve. And those are my comments for this evening, and now I'd like to move on to ordinances for first reading. The first one is an ordinance to authorize vacation of a portion of Church Street in the city of New Brunswick.
Move the ordinance sitting down Wednesday, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two at five-thirty, same day to be advertised.
Check it.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have an ordinance to accept the dedication of a stormwater drainpipe easement in and across a portion of lot two-eight-zero, lot one-point-oh-one-two-six-one Livingston Avenue.
Move the ordinance sitting down Wednesday, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two at five-thirty, same day to be advertised.
Check it.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan for the Farron redevelopment plan area in the city of New Brunswick.
Move the ordinance sitting down Wednesday, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two at five-thirty, same day to be advertised.
Check it.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes. And finally, we have an ordinance to amend the redevelopment area for the downtown redevelopment plan area in the city of New Brunswick.
Move the ordinance sitting down Wednesday, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two at five-thirty, same day to be advertised.
Check it.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have resolutions one through twenty-eight, twenty-four is being held at the request of the Finance Director. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to the public comment on resolutions only for up to five minutes one time. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on the resolutions only, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called.
Unmuted.
Who is on the line ending in zero-seven-zero-four, need to dial star six to unmute themselves. Letters A through D. B through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. Letters Q through T.
And the Stork.
Okay, Ms. Stork. And U through Z. Is there anyone A through B who wishes to address the council? This will be the last call.
Yes, ma'am.
Which should speak on the resolution. Okay? Can you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, I thought this was general public session this regard.
Okay, thank you. Council President, the first member on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Cradaville. Happy New Year. Can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your address?
Happy New Year to you too. Charlie Cradaville, live on one-forty-three Sedam Street here in the Second Ward of New Brunswick, and my name is still spelled K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to ask about the council meeting schedule for this year. Heard your remarks.
Yes.
I don't see a location in here. Is there a plan for where you would have the meetings if things do return to in-person?
There are plans being worked on, and as soon as we have that information, when it feels appropriate to give it to the public, we will. Until then, it would be premature to do such.
Okay, and the five-thirty start time I see is consistent throughout the year. There was one meeting last year where inaccurate information was on the agenda, the meeting before, and led people to miss the meeting because you had it at five instead of five-thirty. Can you tell us why that that meeting was the one that was changed and no others?
Um, I believe I commented on that already. We had one council member who was unable to make it, and in order to give the public the benefit of the full council, and with the proper notice, we were able to move the meeting to a five o'clock start.
Okay, well, again, point out that the agenda for the prior meeting had the wrong time, you know, listed, so it led people to believe it was thirty minutes later than it was, and when we all tuned in, we missed the meeting. But I'll move on. The only other resolution I wanted to ask about is two-two-eight, the liquor license transfer. I believe this is the space in the Heldrick Hotel building. Can I get a update on what's happening with this liquor license?
Ms. Belladon, do you have information regarding this particular liquor license?
Yes, Council President. So, the liquor license is looking to be transferred to the pocket. It will be an inactive license for now. There was a default in the finance arrangement that was previously done, so the license is now taken from the previous owner back to, well, back from Inc., back to Darrell's.
I'm very confused now. So, this is a New Brunswick Development Corporation city-sponsored redevelopment project that got money from the CRDA and MCIA, et cetera. They defaulted on the liquor license? How did such a thing happen? Who's responsible for this?
I'm sorry, Mr. Cradaville. I don't know what you're referencing to.
Well, I guess I'm trying to understand which entity is responsible for defaulting and what exactly it means to default. I'm a little surprised that this project would not be able to, you know, honor its financial.
Unmuted.
Mr. Shammy, can you come in on this?
Yes, I can. I can.
Thank you.
Madam Council President, let me clarify. Devco has nothing to do with this particular license. This license was owned by an entity who operated Inc., apparently in connection with that operation and in connection with the initial transfer from the previous restaurant, which was Darrell's, which also has no connection to Devco or the development there. They had a financing arrangement whereby they would be paid over a period of time in connection with the transfer. Well, apparently, there was a default in connection with the default in the pledge agreement. The license therefore gets transferred back to the original owner, who is Darrell's, and that's what's happening here. It's going back into pocket.
And it's my understanding that Devco did force out the Mark Daniel hospitality, but now the place is sitting vacant. Are there any plans to do anything? Is Bob Paulus and his company Darrell gonna gonna open up another bar and restaurant there, or is this gonna sit vacant?
Well, right now, Mr. Cradaville, this is just for the transfer of the liquor license. That's what this resolution is pertaining to.
Right, and it's going into the pocket, which means it's not being used. There won't be an actual establishment at this time, and I'm just, you know, questioning the wisdom of the folks who are running things at that building, the Heldrick Hotel. I don't see why Inc., you know, one of the better restaurants to come along in recent years, you know, decided to leave. I think that, you know, they were told that somebody else could pay more money for that space, so they were encouraged to bounce, and they did, and now there's nothing. So, you know, I think could have done better there. That's my remarks tonight on the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Who's next?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Happy New Year, Ms. Moore. Can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record? Ms. Moore? I believe you may have to dial star six.
Hi, yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, I don't know if you heard me, but I just wish you a happy new year, and if you could please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome back, two thousand twenty-two. Welcome back. My name is Danielle Moore. I'm on Somerset Street, M-O-O-R-E. My question is regards to my twenty-two with the road being closed.
Yes.
I'm just trying to really understand how ambulants are really gonna work through this. Is this the whole part of Somerset and Lewis that'll be closed, or just on the corner one way?
Mr. Valenti, is there is there one particular area that's being closed, or are they gonna be closing the whole street for these particular dates?
First of all, this is for noise ordinance relaxation, so this will occur at night in order to avoid major traffic, number one. Number two, the pathway for the ambulance will always be provided, whether it's gonna be a detour or if just a small portion of the road will be impacted. This is a fluid situation. It's a matter of installing brand-new pipes to carry new wires originating on Lewis Street and going up Somerset, I believe, to either Division or Hardenburg and turning in. So, the whole area will not be closed all the time. This project will probably go a block at a time as it moves towards the hospital from the front street location. So, certainly, the ambulances will be accommodated. That's the number-one priority, not to impact the hospital's operations. So, depending on what street may be impacted, they may have to go around the block, so to speak. But that, again, like I said, it's a fluid situation.
Thank you, Mr. Valenti. Ms. Moore, do you have any other questions?
Well, I would just say, I still say too much construction going on at one time due to where, like I said, having too many roads being closed off due to where if you're coming from Somerset and Lewis, due to where what, how Plum Street no longer can come through that way, how you have one-way, these are one-way streets now, and I find it very difficult to understand how coming from Somerset Street, from Somerset and Lewis, where how you would basically have to go all the way around going from Lewis to Hamilton Street to go around to the hospital. So, that's my main concern with having that being closed off. I'm not understanding, I have to say, that can take too much time for an ambulance to really go all the way around just to get to the emergency room. I just still say too much construction work going on at one time.
Okay, as Mr. Valenti did state, you know, getting patients to the hospital is the number-one priority, and they do work the routes out in advance of closing any intersections or streets, and the situation is fluid and things are going to be changing, so you just have to watch for the traffic patterns that are posted, and we try our best not to inconvenience anybody for a long length of time. Do you have any questions on any other resolutions?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, the next speaker on the list is Ms. Linda Stork.
Thank you. Happy New Year, Ms. Stork. If you could.
Unmuted.
Spell your last name and give us your address for the record.
Sure. Happy New Year, everybody. Linda Stork, S.T.O.R.K., South Park Boulevard.
Muted.
Yeah, I did have a question about twenty-two. I think I understand a little better what's being done now, but I would just like to point out that at six PM, I happen to drive that route. Six PM, there's still a lot of traffic. I mean, part of it's Rutgers, so it may not be, you know, maybe by then they won't be, you know, full traffic again, and some businesses may not be with everything that's going on, but there's a lot of traffic still at six PM at that intersection. It's not unusual to sit through that light several times. It kind of gridlocked there, which was one of my point originally about the traffic situation, how bad it was going to be there without a closure. So, anyway, my other question was about number eighteen. Could you just clarify the language of that for me? I don't understand what it means.
Well, we have to, I think if you recall throughout some meetings, you'll hear that we're entering into a co-op, which allows us, there are cooperative agreements that allow us to buy through pools and different vendors at discounted rates throughout the city. This resolution enables us to, which one are we on, nineteen, wait, eighteen? I'm sorry.
Eighteen, yeah.
I'm just looking again.
It says for contracting units.
Yes, this enables us to enter into those agreements.
But what does that mean for contracting units?
This is pro forma business that we have to do in order to conduct the business throughout the year. So, for contracting units would be for any separate contract, any separate contract that we're going into for, it could be a variety of things. It could be for a vehicle, it could be for a computer. It depends what it would be at that time.
Okay.
This is a blanket author.
All righty, thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk?
Move the resolutions.
There are no more members on the list. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes. And next, we have council updates. I just want to wish everybody a good, healthy, and contented New Year ahead. A reminder to check the city website for information including announcements, meeting schedules, and events throughout the city. Please follow the guidelines of the executive order by the mayor for mask mandates, and I look forward to serving and working with you and having a productive and meaningful year. Madam Vice President, do you have any comments you'd like to make this evening?
No, that'd be fine, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson, do you have any comments this evening?
No, thank you.
Councilman Egan, do you have any comments you'd like to make this evening?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask Director Rawls, or I'm not sure if it's Director Rawls or Mr. Allen on the call for an OEM update.
Good evening, good evening. Happy New Year, everybody. Okay, the city of New Brunswick has an indoor mask mandate for facilities of public accommodation in effect until January thirty-first. Please be sure to mask up to help slow the spread of the Omicron variant. We are still in the middle of a surge driven heavily by Omicron and travel during the holiday season. Vaccination and booster continue to be the best protection against COVID-19. For COVID testing, the Middlesex County Department of Health and Public Safety and Office of Health Services regularly offers free drive-up COVID-19 testing to any county resident by appointment at its to-scat-away location at one Ericson Drive. The next testing opportunity will be tomorrow, January sixth. Other locations for testing in New Brunswick include Axe's Family Care, seventy-six Livingston Avenue, Better Life Pharmacy, one-twenty-one French Street, College Avenue Community Church, one-hundred College Avenue, InFocus Urgent Care, three-thirty-five George Street, New Brunswick Housing Authority, seven Van Dyke Avenue, Rutgers Institute for Health Care Policy and Aging Research, one-twelve Patterson Street, Saint Peters University Hospital at two-fifty-four Eastern Avenue, and Walgreens Pharmacy at twenty Jersey Avenue, all by appointment. The COVID vaccination and. The COVID vaccination and boosters. The Middlesex County Department of Health and Public Safety and Office of Health Services is offering vaccines at the main campus of Middlesex County by appointment on January twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. Other vaccination sites include My Whole Child Pediatrics, Three Thirty Livingston Avenue, New Brunswick Pharmacy, One Fifty-nine French Street, Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, Rutgers Eric B. Chandler Health Center, Two Twenty, Two Seventy-seven George Street, and Saint Peters Hospital. We will continue to share major COVID news via social media and our city website, cityofnewbrunswick.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rawls. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting for public comment for up to five minutes.
Unmuted.
One time up. Madam Clerk, if you would please prepare a list for us?
Yes, Madam President. If any member of the public wishes to address the council, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in zero seven zero four will need to dial star six to unmute themselves. Letters A through Z. E through H. I through L. Marge Kerber. Okay, I have Ms. Kerber and Mr. Cradaville. Letters M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. Q through T.
Linda Stork.
Okay, Ms. Stork. And letters U through Z. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council? This will be the last call, A through Z, to address the council during this public portion of the meeting. Okay, the list is now closed. Madam President, the first person on the list is Ms. Kerber.
Thank you. Ms. Kerber, if you, oh, first of all, Happy New Year. I didn't get to speak to you earlier during the meeting. Um, if you could please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record?
Sure. It's Marge Kerber, Two Comstock Street. And, um, and Happy New Year to the City Council. I apologize, I missed the beginning of the meeting. Um, I won't go into why, but anyway. Um, Council President Ludwig, I didn't hear from you about the handicap space on, um, I forget the, on Kirkpatrick Street. So I just wondering if you've been in your status on that?
My apologies. I know the Parking Authority was looking into it the next day, and I will follow up with them tomorrow, unless, Mr. Drew, do you have any other additional information about that? I, I know they were going out there either that evening or the next day.
That is correct, uh, and, uh, you're right. We, I will help, I will get a follow-up on that as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's, that, um, about all I have for this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe.
I'll do my best.
Madam President, the next speaker on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Mr. Cradaville, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Council President. Uh, first, a question about one of your remarks. You said that the body-worn cameras are gonna be deployed day shift tomorrow for which units?
For the, uh, day, day patrol and for the traffic division.
Patrol and traffic, okay. I believe the directive calls for a much broader rollout. So I hope that the department will come into compliance soon. Uh, you know, I've spoken at length about this, so I'll move on, uh, through you for, uh, the Police Department. How many murders were there in twenty-twenty-one in the city?
Um, I just made a comment about that before. If you have those types of questions, you're gonna have to reach out to the Police Department via their chosen form of communication. And I believe Deputy Director Miller prefers email for some, and unless it's an Oprah request.
So let me get this straight. You're telling me that the Police Department will no longer answer questions at council meetings?
I'm, we have not had a question-answer session with the Police Department since I became president. And I'm continuing that, and these types of questions need to be put in writing with the Police Department. That is correct.
Well, Madam, Madam Council President, you know that's not true. Uh, in the past, I've been able to ask questions through you as the Chair for Deputy Director Miller, who has attended relatively consistently the meetings, and he's given answers to some of the questions I've asked. So can you please ask Deputy Director Miller, if he's on the call, how many murders there were in twenty-twenty-one?
Mr. Cradaville, I'm telling you, if you have that question, you can put that in writing to Deputy Director Miller. If you have other comments, you can move on.
Okay. Is, is, uh, the mayor on the call?
No, he's not. Or I'm not sure if he is. I, I, I don't think so.
Okay. And the Police Director not on the call?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Is the Deputy Director on the call?
Yes, he is.
Okay. And, you know, through you, Madam Chair, can you please ask him, in consistency with your practices for the past, as long as I've been going to council meetings, can you please ask Deputy Director Miller to comment on the number of murders, and while we're at it, the number of people who were shot in the city last year?
And again, I'm just gonna reiterate to you, if you want that type of information and numbers, you're gonna have to put it in writing to Deputy Director Miller.
Okay. And whose, whose decision is it to change the practice? Is this yours, your decision, Madam Council President?
This isn't a practice change. This is a time for comments. This is not a, a question-answer session. It's not a time for the press. This is a time for public to make comments and on anything that they see that you can go ahead of it.
I am, I am a member of the public, and with all due respect, I'm allowed to ask questions. You're o- it's okay if you don't wanna answer them. You don't have to answer them. You're under no obligation to answer them. But please don't pretend that, that that was not the practice a week ago. Please hold up to the fact that you're changing, you're changing the way that the meetings are being conducted, and you're changing it in a way that makes it harder for people to get information. So I'd like to know if it's true that there were nine murders last year. And I'd like to know if it's true that seventy-seven people were shot in the past two years, and that gun violence has doubled here since twenty-twenty. Can the Police Department, their high-ranking representative, two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-dollar salary, can he comment, can he give us a few sentences about what the department is doing about this? Or are you going to change the rules and deny us from getting that from the Police Department?
I'm not changing the rules. However, the meeting was run last time. I was not here. Uh, Council Vice President Escobar can run it ever how she sees fit. My policy has been to, um, get comments, and I address them at the following meeting. When it comes to the Police Department, the response are needed.
So you've never referred questions to the Deputy Dir- you've never referred questions from the public to Deputy Director Miller in this setting, in the council meetings? You know these are recorded, right?
Not, not for incidents lately, and not when it pertains to information that should be put in writing. I just made a statement at the beginning of this meeting.
Why did you change the practice? Why are you changing this? Doesn't the public deserve transparency from the Police Department? Why are you running interference for Deputy Director Miller and the Police Department?
Excuse me. If you have a question and you'd like me to answer it, I'll answer it. If not, then you can continue to talk.
Okay. At the last meeting, I asked about the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, twenty-four-million-dollar deficit. I was promised Brandon Goldberg would get back to me with answers the next day. I didn't get any answers. What are the premiums that the city's paying? Don't tell us that you're gonna give us answers at the next meeting when that's not happening either.
I wasn't at the last meeting. I'm not sure why Mr. Goldberg didn't get back to you. I will follow up with him on that. And this, this is the policy. It's public commentary. I'm not trying to evade anything. I'm not trying to run interference with the police or the fire department. I'm trying to make it more efficient. If you have questions and they're matters of urgency, you can contact departments, including both the fire and the Police Department during the week, during the two weeks that the council is off. If you have other comments and matters, you can bring them to the council. We will look into them, and if we feel a, uh, comment is needed at the next meeting, you will get follow-up. That is the procedure. That's the policy we're following. And your time has expired, Mr. Cradaville.
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Moore.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, the floor is yours.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. First, I would like to start off with, with, uh, Mr. Pete Jones or Mr. Tom Valentin. It has, I'm, I need your help really bad for the corner of Joyce Comer and Sanford Street. Regardless of, wow, it's been over eight weeks that I reported this light being out. And I mean it, I'm seeing a danger zone due to where for pedestrians crossing the street there, we cannot be seen. Please, if you can, call this in, have this light reported to be turned back on. This is very important. It's very dark on the corner of Joyce Comer and Sanford Streets. Please, just like I reported the lights out on Livingston Avenue from, uh, Delavan Street to Comstock Street being, being out. Due to where what, someone got attacked there October thirty-first, assault, assault there. Then what, that was back in November as well. Big car crash there and, and, uh, at, at night. So it's very important that these lights are to be, to be on. But yes, I cannot stop seeing these close calls at the corner of Joyce Comer and Sanford Streets. So please, I hope you can, due to where you're into traffic authority, that you can take care of this matter for me. Please, to help save someone from getting hit there due to where it's extremely dark there. And I meant you can't see a person crossing the road. I, I would like to ask, uh, uh, can you please tell me how many, uh, police officers tested positive for COVID-nineteen for the past, in the past two weeks? Due to where I know the Police Department did have a big outbreak, as well as the city employees with COVID-nineteen?
I'm sorry, Ms. Moore, we cannot, um, give out personnel issues. We don't discuss personnel issues in, in public forums.
And, and see, and I honestly, that's one reason where I will say thank you to Mayor Cahill for listening to me. When I did call him, he did take me very seriously, where I'm like, wow, he has the power. He doesn't have to wait on mercy. He can put these masks back in order. Due to where, please, stop telling people, wow, if you've been vaccinated, you do not have to wear a mask. And I, I'm glad, like I said, thank you, Jesus. He listened, due to where, wow, the outbreak in the schools. That's what this was coming, coming from, back to the, the kids bring them home. Wow, how many cases were, uh, outbreaks with the high school? I can't get every text message for every, every, every student or every, every school, but I don't even see New Brunswick going back within two weeks, due to where what, now New Jersey's getting over thirty cases a day. This is worse now than it was when it first came out, due to where, wow. Stop telling people, wow, if you've been vaccinated, like you still can't get COVID-nineteen, where you can still get COVID-nineteen even if you've been vaccinated. And honestly, those are the main ones who are getting it. Where, 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 come on. I'm not going against the vaccines, but like I said, stop having these people think, wow, just because you get vaccinated that you can't get COVID-nineteen. But like I said, thank you, Mayor Cahill, for taking the time to listen, due to where, how, like I said, I didn't feel that it was even safe. This is, once you said, Mr. Anderson, how you said it wasn't safe to, to, to open up the meetings, I'm like, wow, okay, you feel that it's not safe, then come on, it was time for you guys to feel that it wasn't safe for these kids to go back to school either. And now what I see now, a situation where, where, uh, with Rutgers, where what, are they even going? Are they possible? They won't even be going back, due to where COVID-nineteen cases are so high. But my point is, please, just stop making it like fooling people, like, wow, just because you get vaccinated, you cannot get COVID-nineteen, because all the vaccine does is help build your immune system, uh, so you don't get it as bad. And what, how Walgreens was saying, oh, if you've been vaccinated, you don't have to put a mask on. Do you really check, do they really check and make sure everyone's been vaccinated that walked through the, uh, Jer- the Walgreens on Jersey Avenue? Then wow, another thing, due to where it was mentioned, I hope that it, it, uh, it is, uh, make sure that all the, due to where some of the businesses don't even know about, uh, the mask, you have to wear the mask. So please, I hope you do spread the word out for all the businesses in New Brunswick stating that masks are to be worn indoors. Thank you. That's all I do have for today. But like I said, good luck. Be safe with the Police Department and the workers, due to where, like I said, yeah, I know it was a big outbreak. Just be safe, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Before we move to our, yes, before we move to our last speaker, I just wanna give an update. Um, I mean, you know, Ms. Kerber had that question, and I did not, um, follow up with her prior. So I just wanna let her know that, um, the division, the New Brunswick Parking Authority did go to the identified spot, confirmed that it needed to be, it is a, um, handicap spot. And they confirmed that it needed to be better painted and identified. And action is going to be taken to make it more identifiable. And, you know, weather permitted, I'll give her an update on how that went at the next council meeting. And now I'll take the last.
The last speaker is Ms. Linda Stork. Thank you. Ms. Stork, the floor is yours.
Okay. So I'm gonna skip the question and just say, because, um, you know, the gun violence is so out of control in our city, um, what, uh, what? Why is there not, um, like, a citywide, uh, effort to, to address this? Um, I know there's no, you know, magic solution, but, uh, you know, different places are trying different things. They're acknowledging the problem and, you know, getting citizen, citizens and the government entities, um, police departments and community groups together to, uh, you know, to try to address the problem. It would, it would, it would seem, it just seems like the not being forthcoming with the statistics is just indicative of the lack of interest in solving the problem. That's how it looks to me. And it's a quality-of-life issue, you know, um, as is the, you know, the excessive traffic building up in the neighborhood. And I would wonder if those people, you know, like, there's this high-rise that's going up as, where they took out the street, but, from the, in front of the Six Ward, where the Six Ward Service Station was, and that whole project that's going up there, you know, do those people, potential tenants that would move into that building, do they know there was a mass murder right down the street? Cause the kids that moved into that house did not know. Had no idea. Um, so it would think, you know, you were gonna be able to say to people, yes, we had this unfortunate incident, but it's been, it's been addressed, you know, we are taking measures to ensure that there's no more problems like that. Um, and I just don't see that happening. That is my concern, and I hope that going forward in two thousand twenty-two, um, you know, we can take some positive actions to lessen the gun violence in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other?
President, may I address something that Ms. Stork, uh, mentioned, please?
Hello?
Council President, did you hear me? Can I address something that Ms. Stork mentioned? May I talk?
Oh, yes. I said, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. I just wanna mention that, um, and I think I had mentioned it before, but it's worth saying it again. In, in terms of the violence in the city, there have been, eh, several, eh, efforts made, um, through different organizations, including the city, because I'm there. I'm part of those meetings. And Robert Wood Johnson has the Hospital Violence Intervention Program, and, uh, we meet regularly. And we have discussed some of the issues that, um, New Brunswick, as any other city, has been experiencing during the last two years. Eh, out of that, and I mentioned before, we had done some peace rallies in the community. We have been working with certain areas in the community that have seen a rise in violent incidents. Um, churches are opening their doors, uh, for families and children at night to do, uh, movie night, family night. night, and there have been two already, one at the United Methodist Church and at the Fugue Church, Rutherford Church on George Street, so that's an ongoing thing that we have been working on, and we have a meeting next week, so there have been some community input with different stakeholders on this, so it's not like it has been pushed under the rug, so we have been trying to address it and will continue to do so in the new year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socor Ludwig.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
You deserve better. Stop your silence, start answering questions.